Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Rob.
Good morning, sir.
There you go.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Show us some scrap fish.
Ah, okay, yeah.
There we go.
That's not gasty-gasty, though.
You know, computers.
Key for tea.
They're like, "Oye, y vienes con operadores cuando llegan los ojos."
Okay, Judge, good. Good morning. It's nine o'clock, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and our regular Commissioner's Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Magalva Loon. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner.
Good morning.
Judge Rathnall.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Garson.
Present.
We hail Congress.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Well, everyone, please rise with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Communications Commissioners. I'd like to welcome this morning. We'll get to you all really quick. I know we all have a very busy day. Congratulations on the start of a brand-new school year. So I think it's looking up the eyes of my grandkids this morning. Everybody's excited.
The parents cry free at last.
Yeah, well, things that never were managed. Lunchtime is done for a while now, so I won't have to be doing those chores for a while. But other Communications Commissioners, of course, Congress and way out plus here last Friday, making some big announcements for our kids also will benefit our kids in near future on a million, one-point-one-million-dollar grant earmarked for a new roof and facilities, other facilities for our roadie arena. I think it's something that the court has been waiting for a long time, and we've already been asked to pursue that project. So hopefully, within a year or two, we can get that project to reality. I know we had some fires this past week. I think I'm waiting for the fire chief to get here, and we've got a report on it. I just, of course, we'll thank all those individuals that really helped in putting out that major brush fire. And then Communications Commissioners.
I know there was a blaze going on on Saturday. Sir, do you have some information on that blaze?
Yes, the Commissioners, it went really well. We raised ten thousand, ten hundred and ten dollars. So we're gonna give half an act to each family for remember in the years in J. D. and on these. Yeah, two former county employees, retired county employees that served with the county for many, many years and they've come to ill health. So thank you for that effort. It was a hot day. These days have been brutal. I know. It was pretty hot, but the community came together, and it was a huge success.
Well, that was awesome, and I know that the community always pulls through when we go through a situation like this. I want to thank you and everybody that was involved and helped out.
Any other communications? We'll move on to public comments. This session provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioner's Court on any items on the agenda. Any members of the public who would like to address according to his time?
We've got one.
Yes, yes, sir. You may approach.
Your Honor, gentlemen.
Yes, your name for the record, sir.
Lansman Israel.
Good morning, sir.
Just wanted to say shalom to you, peace, and Pastor Miller not being here. I say to you in the name of the Lord that the nation rejoices when the rulers are righteous and the heart of the kings in the hand of the Lord. So bless you all for what you do for us and stay on point, because he's looking at you to act right as you do what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We, we need to stop to bid every time he doesn't, not here with us, but he'll be back, I'm sure.
Well, very cool.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Moving on, Commissioner, the proclamation.
I have an appointment. I'm sorry. Becky Gutierrez is not in, but now that I see the district is here, just to announce that we're gonna have.
Judge Tyler, do you want to?
Yes, that's true. Yes, I do talk very loud. Yes, just to remind everybody that we will be having a health and wellness fair at the library. And Ms. Becky will give us the one in charge of this. But we will be having Texas A&amp;M Department, the Medication Assistance, Art Department, which is the initiative program, and a lot more people are coming from Laredo, I believe Laguna, Osmalo, Denton. And this is gonna be on August the sixteenth, which is this week, from two to six. Everybody's invited. I believe also the National Guard will be there.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us up to date on that.
I will probably pass some flyers so they can attend.
We'll move on to proclamations and resolutions and proclamations. I have number thirty-eight. And we have a proclamation for September twenty twenty-three as attendance awareness month, and the seat for Debra. Good morning, Ms. Debra, and of course, we have our superintendent, Dr. Mady. Good to see you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing us to be here today. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but one of the biggest challenges that we face as a district is attendance. The state average is approximately ninety-five percent, and our district runs around eighty-nine-point-two percent on the average. Sensible's a little bit higher, but overall, our attendance rate is at eighty-nine, which is considerably lower than what the state expects from us. It is a big challenge for our district, mainly because it equals to loss of learning with our students. And of course, it's directly tied to our budget. So Texas is one of six states that is given their funding based on average daily attendance, which is, as says, an average of all the daily attendance. And so we are really gonna be pushing hard on communicating with our parents and letting them know that kids need to be in school. Once they enroll pre-K all the way up to twelve grade, it's compulsory attendance, and they need to be present. So we really appreciate the opportunity to start this initiative for September. We'll be doing a host of activities in our district to promote that, not only in September, but year-round, including block blocks and, you know, parent town hall meetings and some of those things to educate our parents. But really important for our kids to be at school every day, and so we appreciate that. So I'll look forward to it.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr.
Good morning, Judge Rappel, Commissioners, other elected officials, county members. As Director of King's Public Education Information Management System and Student Attendance for Sparta County ISD, I come before you today to present an attendance awareness proclamation. We, as a district, would like to propose an attendance awareness campaign for the month of September and every September thereafter. We would like for the month of September to be a county-wide attendance awareness month. We believe that by joining forces with our elected officials, school district, and our community, make sure all our students of Sparta County will attend school every year and every day. As a community, we need everyone working together in helping to educate our parents and/or guardians by sending a message that school is very important and that we need their children in school every day. Parents need to understand that we, as a district, have attendance rules and guidelines that are in place for students to receive an education. Texas has an attendance school rule, step two, five-point-zero-nine-two of the Texas Education Code, that states that students must be in school ninety percent of the time the class is offered. We have guidelines in place to prevent those chronic absences, but we need everyone's help. Taking attendance and monitoring participation is crucial for identifying whether students are accessing the lessons or they need supports to overcome barriers of showing up. While we have experienced in the past years and continue to experience lower attendance rates in our district every year, the county judge, other elected officials, school board members, and superintendent can signal the importance of school attendance by declaring September as attendance awareness month. Therefore, the proclamation read. Whereas good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absence to use rates with a focus of starting as early as pre-kindre and kindergarten. Whereas chronic absence, missing ten percent or more or more school, alert schools, community partners, and families that one or more positive conditions for learning are not in place. Whereas students are more likely to attend school when positive conditions for learning, physical and emotional health and safety, a sense of belonging, connection and support, academic challenge and engagement, and adult and peers with social and emotional competency are in place. Whereas the impact of absenteeism and punitive approaches to school discipline contribute to the achievement gap that separates students for lost learning time in the classroom. Whereas showing up for school is an opportunity for students to build routines that can create a sense of safety and belonging, increase engagement, and develop trusting relationships with peers, teachers, and school staff that increase engagement and motivation and motivated them to participate in learning. Whereas reducing absenteeism requires taking up a comprehensive approach that begins with prevention and early intervention and adopting trauma-informed approaches rather than responding with punitive action. Whereas improving attendance and reducing absenteeism takes schools, families, and community partners working together to identify and address practice contributing to students missing school, particularly in lack of digital access, mental and physical health services, and access to basic economic supports, including food and housing. Whereas partnering with students and families to monitor attendance as well as understanding and address barriers to attendance requires building and sustaining caring relationships and regular communications in the home language spoken by families. Whereas research found even before the pandemic that families had high aspirations for their children, yet faced significant barriers in getting their children to school or lacked the knowledge that showing up early and early every day into school was crucial to academic achievement. Whereas taking attendance daily in a consistent manner and for different types of learning opportunities in-person or homebound is essential to identifying when students begin to miss too much school. Whereas taking a positive problem-solving approach to reducing absenteeism requires expanding data to include reviewing chronic absence in attendance data for in-person and homebound, availability of working contact information for families, connectivity with your devices and internet, and positive relationships. Whereas promoting attendance requires noticing as soon as possible when students are starting to miss too much school in order to engage students and families, identifying and offering support and early intervention resources. Whereas ensuring an equal opportunity to learn requires using data to detect high levels of absenteeism and missed opportunities to learn by school rate and student population. Now, therefore, be it resolved as Sparta County Commissioner's Court stands for the nation in recognizing September as attendance awareness month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing absenteeism and addressing the factors that cause students to miss school, whether offered in person or homebound, in order to ensure all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. We recognize that we must work together to engage students and families and send a message that learning can and must continue whether students participate in person, homebound, or through blinded approaches. Specifically, we will make clear that improving student attendance, including taking daily attendance in a consistent manner and monitoring absenteeism continues to be a top priority. Encourage family engagement and students sustain civic action to help families get their children to school every day. Analyzing our data to identify which students are most affected by chronic gases as well as to unpack common attendance challenges that need to be addressed. Therefore, if approved by all, we would like to invite the members of our community together with our honorable Judge, elected officials, school board members, superintendents, teachers, and students to sign our joint proclamation during our first home club football game, which will be August the twenty-fifth during halftime. Hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. This is our signature, the two proclamation presented second by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Ms. Debra. That was a long-winded.
It was, but I feel that it's very important for our kids to be in school every day.
Yes.
And we have our attendance recovery officers with us today.
So all of our, every campus has an attendance recovery officer slash kind of parent liaison, and so they're charged with a very difficult job of calling every morning to parents and also doing home visits. So they experience rootness and hanging, you know, people hanging up on them and, you know, refusing to open the door, looking through the window when they see them. Nobody wants to answer the door for a little down. And of course, the support of our board members.
I see. Debra, once I did, remember, thank you, sir, for being here with us.
So definitely a very important initiative. You know, it equates to programs in our schools, and we are so committed to providing for our kids. Our kids have spoken to us. They said they want more opportunities, and so we're trying to provide that for them. But of course, all of that, you know, we need to be able to have the funding. Our ADA legislators dead-ended us at the public school, and we came back with not anything. And so, you know, October's gonna be a little late by the time they convene again, and we don't know what, if anything, they're gonna, they're gonna release for public schools. Incidentally, the state rates an F in school funding, in school finance area. And so there's a movement to make the state accountable, all of our accountability, to have the state's letter grade attached to school districts in the hope that they'll start to focus on public schools. So they continue to provide us with unfunded mandates and underfunding us when, you know, we've got the big charge of taking care of our kids and making sure that they have everything that we need. So this is gonna go a long way.
Well, Doctor, on my behalf, I thank you and the entire district staff for doing an amazing job. So, you know, we wish you a tremendous year.
Thank you. We got it all settled. So it was a very smooth transition, and so thank you to anybody out there that was supporting us in traffic duty and, you know, dropping off crying kids and all the things. But we didn't have any runners today, so.
That's a resolution proclamation. Do you want us to sign anyone? Do you have them?
Yes, we have.
Is that, do you want to take a picture?
It's up to the school district.
Then we can take a picture, or, yeah, and then we'll take another one when we join forces with all our kiddos, if you all join us.
Yes.
So me, three, your sergeant.
Yes.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. How are you?
Good morning, Judge.
Venture.
Thank you. Get it, that's time. Got it all here. I let you mind.
Thank you, Judge.
I will hire you.
I will. I would complain I'm trying to.
Monday?
Mary Jane, do you need a copy for the side of? Can we get one? Hello, ladies. Thank you for the job. Good morning. People joining us.
Roger. Roger.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ladies, thank you.
Comment, we're good?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. And your package commissioners, we had invoices from July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through August the tenth, twenty twenty-three for a total of six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion to approve, present.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Solis. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is Treasury Report. Salina is not here this morning. We've got page one is our investment interest income for Sparta National in our tax school accounts. Over CDs and tax school, we've got a total of eleven million, six-hundred-and-eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Interest for the month was twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. And interest for the year, we have earned a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. We've got our fiduciary demand accounts on page two, which includes our payable account, operating account, general fund, road and bridge, and our water works specifically. Among them, we have a beginning balance of two million, one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. We have revenue of one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. We had expenses of one million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. So we have an ending balance on all those accounts of two million, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. And we have other demand accounts, which includes our term forfeiture account, the sheriff forfeiture commissary, there's quite a few. And we've got a beginning balance of one million, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Revenue of four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. We have expenses of seven-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-one, sixty, for an ending balance of one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Moving on to our electricity, energy reports, and water for the month of July. Our electric bill was eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. So it's a significant increase from the month of four. I think we need to talk to our Texas Power Pool folks. I think we were supposed to have a stable amount for the year, a budget on, but it's been fluctuating. We're almost on a unratable account, and so I think we need to have a second look at exactly how they're charging the county. On our water, for the month of July, we had seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and seven cents for a total of, for the year, our water, we spent eighty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents for two months ago. And for our electricity bill for the year, it's been six-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents for two months ago. So we'll be at over eight-hundred thousand. We have our royalty on the natural gas wells throughout the county, maybe here in town, that the county has an interest in. We have budgeted a hundred thousand revenues for the year so far this year. We're at, for the month of July, we received three thousand, four-hundred-and-twelve dollars and forty-seven cents. For the year, we're at eighty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty, and forty-nine cents, which is eighty-five percent of budgeted amount. I don't think we'll reach a hundred thousand. We could be close, but we won't get there. Of course, natural gas price is really depressed since the budget started, but they've been creeping back up. Hopefully, we can see a little bit more production out of that. The county treasury grants on our buildings throughout the county. Sinehous Civic Center brought in for June, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Nothing for July. Quacon brought a hundred-and-fifty dollars for July. The Pavilion brought nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for July. And Sparta Community Center brought in thirty-seven hundred dollars for July. The swimming pool for the month of July brought in two thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two, and the Sinehous Swimming Pool brought in two thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-three, zero, one for the year. I think the swimming center were up to twenty-four thousand, four-hundred. The Pavilion, seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ten. Quacon, a hundred-and-fifty, and the Sinehous Civic Center, three thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the year. Moving on to our county clerk, District Court, and other revenue departments. The county clerk, Fund Ten, we have budgeted sixty thousand revenues, expected revenues for the year. The month of July brought in six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-three, point, twenty-five. For the year, we're at one-hundred-and-eleven thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-eight, point, eighty-three, which is a hundred-and-eighty-five percent of normal. Mary Jane, what happened? It's a lot of activity. On very, that's good news. On Fund Fifteen, we have budgeted ten thousand, nine-seventy-four. For the month of June, three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars came in for the year, twelve thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four, ten, which is a hundred-and-eighteen point thirteen percent of budgeted amount, which is also good. Our district clerk, Fund Ten, we have budgeted eighty-five thousand in revenues for the month of July. Two thousand, four-hundred-and-eleven, twenty-five cents came in for the year. We're at one-hundred-and-one thousand, nine-fifty-one, point, thirty-five, which is a hundred-and-nineteen point nine-four percent of expected revenues. Our district clerk, Fund Fifteen, for the month of July, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars were collected for the year, eleven thousand, one-seventy-four, point, zero, five, which is a hundred-and-sixteen thousand, I mean, a hundred-and-sixteen point twelve percent of normal. Our ordinance, which is Fund Ten, Machinitas, we have expected revenues of one-point-two million dollars coming into the county for the year. So far this year, with two months ago, we're at one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five-hundred, which is a hundred-and-two point two-one percent of expected revenue. Our sales tax, we have budgeted two-point-one million in expected revenues for the year. For the month of July, a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, nineteen dollars and ninety cents came in. And for the year, with two months ago, we're at two-point-one, two-two, sixty-three, eighty-three, so which is a hundred-and-one point zero dollars of expected revenue. Our lab field, we have budgeted three-hundred thousand, expected revenues for the month of July, twenty-five thousand, four-sixty-two came in. And for the year, we're at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six, which is seventy-nine point fifty-nine percent of revenue, expected revenue. For our jail, we have budgeted two-point-four million dollars in expected revenues for the month of July, four-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, one-twenty-seven point eighty-eight came in. For the year, we're at two-point, two million, five-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three, point, thirty-two, which is a hundred-and-seven point sixty percent of expected revenue with two months ago, and the sheriff here. The jail's been doing very well. Jail telephone, we had it budgeted forty-five thousand. So far this year, for the month of July, we're at five thousand, a hundred-and-two dollars and ninety-four cents came in. For the year, we're at forty thousand, three-fourty-five, eleven, which is eighty-nine point sixty-six percent of expected revenues. Jail bond fees, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We're at four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. Jail office fee, we have budgeted smaller amounts, four thousand, two-hundred. Three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars came in for the month of July, and we're up to six thousand, two-hundred-and-six point twenty-five, which is a hundred-and-twenty-seven point seven-seven percent of expected revenues. And then our EMS, fire, fire, six hundred thousand was the expected revenues from that department. We budgeted for the month of July, sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents came in. And for the year, we're at six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-oh-four, point, sixty-one, which is a hundred-and-five point fifty-five percent of expected revenue. Good job, Dan. So now we have our, our checks of the piece. JP Precinct One for the month of July, saw revenues of two thousand, four-hundred-and-four dollars and eighteen cents. For the year, we're at seventy-two thousand, ninety-two point sixty-four. JP Precinct Two saw thirteen thousand, four-forty, point, twenty-three for the month of July, and they're at ninety-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven, point, eleven. JP Precinct Three brought in one thousand, three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and for the year, they were at twenty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and forty-nine cents have been collected, and JP Precinct Four brought in six thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-one, point, ninety-three, and for the year, forty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Treasury Report presented by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is full of checks issued. We had checks from July twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through August the tenth, twenty twenty-three for a total of six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents approved. Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mendoza. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to item number nine is the Texas Central Electric Department Report. Hello, Ms. Morales.
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
For the year month of July, we have a general sum, eighty-nine thousand, three-seventy-two, forty-nine cents. And then there's a refund for one thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven forty-seven to put on. And then for this interest and sinking, we have a total of thirty-four thousand, seven-seventy-one, fifty-four cents. And then refunds for four-hundred-and-fifty-four, fifty-five cents, part-to-market, thirty-two, forty-seven, our refund for money. And then special road and bridge, we have nine thousand, six-ninety-one, twenty-six, twenty-six cents. And then a refund for a hundred-and-twenty-seven day degree. And then we have the hotel motel for the month of July. Then we have the hotel motel for the month of July, nine thousand, sixty-eight with four cents. Uh, for a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ten with forty-six cents. And then we have the hotel hotel from the month of, of October, twenty-twenty-two, to July thirty-first. That's a total of ninety-two thousand, five sixty, doing the ninety cents. And then we only have a build, slight, uh, drop on insulation percentage.
Here's a.
Yeah, from ninety-three to ninety.
Yeah, almost a percent, oh, percentage point, over the half, Commissioner? A little more than half, one and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, uh, a little, a little more than a point behind the last week's collection.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Morales.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports and presentations, our item number ten is a report of our Fire Chief, Danny Ariada, on the large brush fire in, in central Zapata County last week. I know, I mean, I will have a lot to, to inform the court on.
Yes, we do. Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, Judge. Uh, the best way I can, uh, inform the court and the community of the incident that occurred on, uh, August the seventh is I generated a report myself. That way I won't miss any of the, of, uh, the, the steps that happened and, and everything that went on. So I'm gonna go ahead and start reading off the report. It is a lengthy report, so I won't take too much of the court's time. So this was a gin fire that, uh, occurred on August the seventh. Zapata County Fire Department was requested for a vehicle fire on Highway sixteen, August the seventh, twenty-twenty-three, at ten thirty-one AM. Units one zero eight, one twenty, and brush truck number one were dispatched. Upon arrival, units encountered a grass fire that was started by a vehicle fire. Grass fire was already over ten acres in size at the time. Fire crews were having difficulties fighting the fire due to the brush trucks getting stuck in the sandy terrain. All of our three trucks were getting stuck in the sand, and crews were unable to gain access to the head of the fire. At that moment, uh, we made the decision not to put our firefighters at risk or our equipment at risk due to the sandy terrain. So then Zapata County Fire Department then made the decision to call Texas Forest Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife for much-needed resources such as dozers and strike teams. At two eleven PM, Texas Forest Service arrived on scene setting up incident command post in San Antonio, Texas on FM thirty-one sixty-nine. The fire began burning at a moderate rate of speed throughout, through grass and brush fuels. Firefighters planned to use local roads to work and box the fire into containment. No structures were directly threatened at the moment. Zapata Fire provided three brush trucks, one rescue unit, and one engine to support fire operations, including manpower. Zapata County Commissioners Precinct Two, Three, and Four provided the following resources: manpower, dozer operators, one dozer, and one maintainer road grader. WCID provided assistance by locating water sources within the ranches and by lending a helping hand, and actually, uh, smothering hotspots with shovels. West Water Energy Services provided a water tender for water supplies for two days. Multiple oilfield companies were also on scene providing assistance by shutting down wells and opening ranch gates that were locked so fire crews could gain access. The Zapata County Sheriff's Office also provided assistance with securing FM thirty-one sixty-nine and providing fabric control and safety to all our fire crews constantly crossing the road to provide operations. Texas Forest Service mobilized the following to assist Zapata Fire with the response. Fire managers and miscellaneous overhead, air resources, including air attack plane, large air tanker, engines, multiple dozers, brush trucks, UTV units, ambulance crews, and, and fire crews from Edinburgh Fire Department, Alice Fire Department, Hewitt Fire Department, South Lake Fire Department, Alito Fire Department, Nagadoshi Fire Department, Kane Fire Department, Corpus Christi Fire Department, Parker County Fire Department, San Diego Fire Department, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System Truck Strike Team from Götuna. At approximately five thirty-nine PM, the fire had already burned five hundred acres and was not contained. The objective was to keep the fire from passing FM thirty-one sixty-nine. Meanwhile, an air attack plane provided the early overview for the fire, then directed the large air tanker to drop a flame retardant on the western and southwestern planks of the fire to provide initial heat suppression. State and county dozer crews were constructing containment lines on the northern flank, trying in, tying in with the containment line started by the local op, local equipment operator on the eastern flank. After the fire died down, a bid around seven PM, engine crews with Zapata County Resources, uh, contained the western flank off of FM thirty-one sixty-nine. At approximately ten forty-five PM, the fire was already two thousand, five hundred acres in size with sixty percent containment. Dozer and engine crews worked directly on the western side left flank, constructing containment lines and conducting heat suppression. The eastern side had two spot fires that containment, uh, that crossed the containment line. Dozer's crew, crews were able to contain those flames directly. The fire behavior became more moderate, uh, after the efforts of the dozer and brush crews that have worked their operations. On August the eighth, dozer, I mean, August the eighth, dozer crews completed the eastern containment line early in the morning around two AM. And Zapata Fire brush truck patrol, uh, for the remainder of the night. Ground crews arrived on scene at nine AM, and air resources arrived, uh, arrived at around ten AM. The air tactical ground supervisor in the air attack plane observed that the fire had no growth overnight. But there was some interior smoke, and the fire was still creeping within containment lines. Dozer crews constructed containment lines around the right shoulder of the fire, and they had the entire left flank contain, containment line stabilized by one thirty PM. Crews contained, continued suppression work most of the day, fighting isolated pockets of heat on the right flank. Dozer crews have also been working to contain a five-acre slope over, which is a new fire started outside the containment from the original fire, towards the heel of the fire. By ten PM, the fire was already three thousand acres in size with an estimated eighty-five percent containment. All crews had been released by this time for the night, and the Zapata County Fire Department patrolled the fire once again over the remainder of the night. On August the ninth, all personnel met at the incident command post in San Antonio FM thirty-one sixty-nine at nine AM, and fire crews and dozers continued working on reinforcement containment lines and putting out hotspots throughout the morning and day. The grass fire that started on Monday seventh was one hundred percent contained, and all operations were completed at six PM, Wednesday, August the ninth, with a total of three thousand, five hundred and six point one acres burned. The area was confirmed with accurate, accurate mapping done by U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Texas Forest Service. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
I want to commend your crews, uh, with, with limited manpower, with, they were out there in blistering heat and, uh...
We've, we've, uh, we've encountered and fought grass fires, you know, somewhat this size, uh, the obstacle that we, we came across and was, uh, the main issue for what was going on with this fire was the terrain, the sand.
Yeah, the sandy country that central Zapata County.
Yes, sir.
Quail country, but it's, but it's very sandy.
So basically, uh, the number one tool that was needed to fight this fire were dozers for the most part.
And I would thank the Commissioners for, uh, you know, getting that dozer out there and then working, uh, getting out there as quickly as they could. Of course, it takes time.
It takes time, of course.
And that may be something that we may, in the future, have a little bit. And it's hard to have that plan in action to where, uh, we get, uh, manpower and equipment necessary to respond quickly. But I think the response was, was very adequate and, and as fast as we could.
It was, it was with the, the resources that we, that came in and the, the time, uh, the timing mattered, they came in. Of course, the fire did grow by the time all those resources came about, but, uh, for the most part, uh, it was a tremendous help that we got.
And Commissioner Morales happened to have, uh, his, uh, mortar grader close by.
Yes.
Of course, we were able to get an operator for it and, and certainly help out, so I think, but I guess the, uh, I guess the best call that you made was for the Texas Forest Service.
Oh, yes.
Get here as, as quickly as it could, and, and they certainly, once they got here, there was a noticeable difference on, on how we could attack that fire and, and, and luckily, no structures were burnt, is my understanding.
To, to, to our knowledge, and, uh, as far as people reporting to us, no structures or livestock were burnt or hurt or, to, to right now.
Yes.
I'm not saying that it did, but as of now, what we saw or anything that came to us as far as reporting-wise, nothing has been reported to us as far as structures.
And, uh, yes, squad duty from the coal companies, uh, of course, they provide a tank boost, uh, to our, to our units, which is very important, uh, to have that, that water source.
Yes.
So it was, uh, you know, unfortunately, a fire, it's, it's difficult to handle, but it was a, overall, a very good team effort from everyone, uh, all the agencies involved. And, and the neighboring communities to send, uh, to, to respond like they did. Now, you, you mentioned cities that are away in East Texas and Corpus, they're part of a strike team?
They're part of a strike team from, uh...
And that is, they swear.
Uh, well, they're everywhere, like, they don't have a central location. Uh, Zapata County can be part of that task force if, if we desire to, but you know the reason why we do not choose to.
How, how far were they, or, that happened to be, or, were they in the regal at the time, or?
Those, those, uh, agencies responded.
That task force.
They responded from their, their agencies.
Oh, from their.
So not everybody got there at around two something, you know, they started calling in as...
Okay, so government just started coming down.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So they, they, they're based out of their own counties or respective cities, and, and as soon as the call is made to TSMAS, uh, they coordinate with the strike teams that participated in their program and start calling up and to see who's available to be sent to the incident, uh, on hand. Uh, I also, Judge, really quick, I just compiled a list of the people that, that donated stuff. I just, I would like to, I would like to apologize in advance that we did miss out somebody, because there was a lot of people that, that sent help, uh, as far as food and water and whatnot. But, uh, we did compile a little bit, a little list. Uh, he said, I, I have family, Joe Chick, AC and Electra, Fuego Towing, Mr. and Mrs. Crisanto Mesa, Mr. and Mrs. George and Pamela Pearson, Mr. Rockroyd James III, Mrs. Susan James, Shorty Speed and Mechanic Shop, Victoria's Carom in the Service, Zapata Auto Parts, and Zapata County Sheriff's Office. All these people that were mentioned, they did help us with providing, mm, water, gatorade, soda, for, for the entire three days of the incident. So we thank them for their, for their help.
Good job, Detective.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Judge.
They'll do their work.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the action items, Commissioners. We will deliberate, consider action item number eleven is to solicit a request for qualifications, our requ, for engineering services for Zapata County fire stations. And Commissioner, this is for, uh, the earmark that Congressman Brad was able to, to get through Congress and, and provide funding for the construction of a, any fire station. We, we have an administrator on board, so this will be the next step in bringing an engineer and architect.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, Morales, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is to approve an amendment to an interlocal agreement between Zapata County and the Texas Department of Agriculture for the twenty-twenty-two Texas CDPG Colonia Fund Planning and Needs Assessment. Commissioners, this item, we, uh, a few months ago, we did approve our participation in this, uh, uh, Colonia Fund Planning and Assessment with the county being, uh, I would say the anchor county, providing, uh, any invoices and payment to, to the vendor. We had selected Texas A&amp;M International. There was, uh, an amendment was needed, uh, was informed by the TDA last week because of the dates that were on the initial agreement. Uh, there was a, an error in, in one of the dates, the start date, so we're, that's why we're bringing it back to court.
Motion to approve this amendment, just to adjust the
The date.
length of the, uh, of the...
On the start date, actually.
Start date.
Yes.
I see.
Motion by, by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, and this is, uh, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, and this will be, uh, used, uh, by Texas A&amp;M International to do study from, uh, west Zapata, all the way to the valley, on what needs the colonias, uh, will, will entail in, in the coming, uh, future. And item number thirteen is to approve a subrecipient agreement between Zapata County and Texas A&amp;M University Colonia Program for the Texas CDPG Colonia Fund Planning and Needs Assessment Grant.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Morales. And like I mentioned, the grant will be for four hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, it's a hundred percent grant. And the county will basically be, uh, paying invoices and, uh, but, uh, we have some say as to when which county goes first. And so I think, uh, TDA reached out to us and said that we were interested in, in, in being the anchor county for it, and, and the court agreed to, to do that. So, uh, got a motion to second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen is to approve the twenty-twenty-four sheriffs and constable fees.
The fees remain the same.
The same. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to approve the estimate of four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars to R E P and B Incorporated to remodel the Zapata County Shop restroom.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza. I, I, it's, we, I, I, I put this item on, I did, there is a need for it, is there, there's seconds? Uh, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Uh, we can wait till the next budget year, uh, or we can get more, uh, bids, uh. It's basically the restroom, uh, basically for the ladies.
How they would have an officer staff, I think, give some warmth.
Is, uh, is not in good condition, it's in fact very, uh, uh, the...
Yeah.
They're gonna do the, the floors.
Started painting, they started painting.
The floor, the, the, of course, the floor then, and the sink and vanity, the lighting. Well, that's why it seemed a little high, but, uh, that, but we could certainly wait a few months, when you buy them a number running tight or older on, on the... So it's up to the court if I want to...
Well, there's a motion to second, Judge.
To go ahead, so although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen is to hire Capex Consulting Group to facilitate the amendment process for an upcoming solar project. Commissioners, we, uh, we received an application from Tetris Solar, uh, for a new solar farm that, that they plan to construct in Zapata County. Uh, they did, uh, provide the application, and, uh, you know, Mr. Stone helped us with the last three, uh, solar farms that, that were, uh, approved a few months ago. And this is an additional one that, uh, is a two hundred and fifty megawatt, two hundred and fifty million dollar investment, uh, in our county. It's in, in central Zapata County, and, and it's known as Stetson's Renewable Holdings LLC. And they're, uh, working under next era, uh, Energy, uh, Renewables is the parent company who joined this project. Uh, and just for full disclosure, uh, I will be signing a conflict of interest disclosure. Uh, my family has some land that is part of this, of the full solar farm, so I will not be, uh, voting on any, uh, upcoming decisions that the court makes or any discussions. In, in fact, I, I would like, uh, the contact person maybe to be Mr. Figueroa, if, if, uh, Stone is selected as, as the representative to, to, to do it. And, uh, uh, just to make sure, the project does entail, and it does show the owner, the owners of the property, basically, there's, there's, uh... Yeah, so, like I say, Rapid Land Care does have an interest, will have an interest if, if the project is built. And I do have an interest in Rapid Land Care Company. Then the other parcels included will be Deloce's Family Limited, and Las Presas Ranch LLC, and HES, Las Lomas Ranch LLC, uh, will be the landowners, uh, of this project if and when it is constructed. I think one, one of the things that, that is here is that they plan to construct, uh, a few years down the road, and that may be something that, uh, I think, uh, twenty twenty-eight, I believe, we have the construction date.
Twenty twenty-seven, January.
What, did you find it?
Construction start, it says January twenty twenty-seven.
Um, so start date will be twenty twenty-seven, so it's like four years down the road of planning. You know, the other projects we went, they're usually were two years from construction, the ones that are coming up. Uh, so this one may require some additional negotiations between, uh, you and, and, uh, Mr. Capex.
And how many acres are we talking about, Judge? I know you mentioned it earlier.
Uh, so, if they're out here, we can tell them, uh, thirteen, three...
About six thousand acres, roughly.
Six thousand.
Roughly.
Six thousand.
I, I, I've dealt with Mr. Stone quite a bit in previous, uh, uh, preparations of, uh, and negotiations with, uh, different entities, so I'll be more delighted to serve in that capacity.
Okay.
Is there a motion that we approve, uh, to appoint Capex Consulting and to appoint, should be, uh, as a contact person?
I'll second your motion. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any other discussion? Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mary Jane, all that's staying. Item number seventeen is to approve Texas Aviation Capital Improvement Grant for the rehabilitation of Zapata County Airport at a ninety-ten percentage split. Our airport director, Ramon Montes, I think, uh, it's certainly, uh, I don't know if I want to explain, but it's certainly, uh, a very enticing grant that will completely re-renew, re-reconfigure our airport and, uh, allow for heavier aircraft, the bigger aircraft, uh, so, yes.
There'll be a lot of information to it, but, uh, on one of them, because that's gonna be for like five point, close to five point nine million dollars, and it'll be ninety-ten. So on that one, they will, they're gonna rebound, uh, areas where, I don't know, do you have the, the?
The map.
It should be.
Yes, it's there.
Okay, on every one judge, uh, there's a small rectangle that's in need of a full gap repair because of deterioration that has occurred there. Uh, number two, they're going to, all five thousand feet of the runway, by sixty will be, you know, two inches, and then they're gonna repaint the whole thing and widen it fifteen feet, so like you said, for, for heavier aircraft. and then they're gonna repaint the whole thing and widen it fifteen feet, so like you said, for, for heavier aircraft. So we can, and, and we need the width for.
So, yeah, so sixty will be seventy-five feet?
Seventy-five feet, that's correct. The turnover, the turnarounds will be demolished because they're in pretty bad shape, and, uh, they're gonna be reconstructed. Uh, they're gonna put all new runway lights, uh, with LEDs, turnarounds, rail lights, uh, install new regulator, radio control, XST wall. We're gonna put a brand new rotating beacon, tower will be updated to a breakdown tower for easier access, and install new signage on the runway as well. So overlay will be increased from twelve thousand five hundred pounds to thirty thousand, thirty thousand, sorry, uh, pounds. And, uh, we will add an addition on number seven because when they're gonna turn around to fuel up, Judge, with a new fuel farm, it's gonna be closer to the apron, so we will have to, uh, uh, add a section there. But that's all gonna be included with the five point eight. So basically, it's gonna be a brand new airport because they're gonna do also the whole apron around the T-hangers and everything. So everything's gonna be, you know.
So five point eight billion, uh, ten percent is five hundred and eighty thousand. I think most of those funds could come from our enterprise fund. We're, we're gonna use that sum for the fuel people, but I think we'll have some funds left over. That fund is, is building, uh, every month, so.
It is, it is.
I, I think we'll have to take a huge hit from our, uh, our fund balance to, to fund it.
We're gonna be getting revenues from the fuel farm.
Exactly.
Yes, yes. And we already have some revenues there, so it won't, uh.
Uh, ninety-ten usually is, is, they're difficult grants to, to acquire, and I, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Montes. He basically did this all, uh, on his own, communicating the, the needs, uh, that our airport, uh, uh, had and, uh, reaching out to Austin, and, and so this is, uh, almost, the funding isn't placed, I guess.
It is, it is. Uh, it's gonna go through commission, Texas dot commission in October, and then from there, Judge, once it passes, then everything's a go, but, you know, it's gonna be in stages.
So today, what the court will, will say is we're, we are agreeing to the ten percent, uh.
Yes, but, and, and all, because there's multiple projects. That's only one of the, uh, but I know it's, uh.
I guess the total will be a little over six million dollars?
Well, because the first judge will be the engineering, which that would be the first project, which that was three hundred thousand, and ten percent would be thirty.
Okay.
And then the following year is gonna be the construction of all the, basically the whole airport. So that's gonna be five point eight eight six two nine two million, and our cut's gonna be five eighty-eight six thirty.
So we're at six hundred thousand more than.
Yes, and then there's another one because of the wildlife fencing all around the airport with the new land acquisitions that we've acquired. That's gonna be a total of four hundred and fifty thousand, and our cut would be forty-five thousand. And then at last, because of the airport layout plans, it's, everything's gonna be, you know, basically upgraded, then they have to, we have to have a new airport layout plan, which that's gonna be a hundred thousand, so our cut would be ten thousand.
At six hundred and fifty thousand, uh, for this, a, a county, uh, contribution to match.
But, I mean, it's gonna be.
Mr. Montes, have we completed the land acquisitions yet, or we're still pending some?
We're, we're pending two properties, and I've been with, uh, Judy Fielder, uh, Boston, the Texas dot, and we're still kind of like.
We're still negotiating with them?
Yes, yes.
Are they more leaning towards a yes or no at this point?
I think more of a no, so.
Is that gonna?
They've been on the side for a while.
Yeah.
Yes, I know one is only like a little less than two acres. The other one is about twenty-eight acres. So, but for the most part, everything else has been acquired, that we need to start, uh, clearing out and, and, uh, hopefully by then, you know.
And if, if those two property owners don't come through, is that gonna put a, is that gonna cause any major complications for the project or?
We might have to go for condemnation. So that's already being discussed with them, so that's what we're kind of, uh, in fact, I'll probably call tomorrow.
That we've been discussing this with Mr. Montes, and it's certainly, you know, we're landowners, we certainly don't want, but we understand, uh, the value of, of the land and and the attachments, uh, you know, it is a difficult, uh, route to take, but I think, you know, Texas Aviation, Miss Fielder, has been negotiating with these folks for a good while now.
About ten years.
They, they, it just hasn't gotten anywhere, and that might be the last step.
And they, they have been offered a fair, a fair price for.
Well, I'm in reading, I believe so, yes. Because there's a lot of documentation that, you know, they sent to me maybe about a year ago, so I've been going through everything and spent some time, so. So, but I mean, it's showing a little bit of leeway there in the.
Well, I think, uh, yeah, once we start using that, that word, uh, it does attract the things. In the end, we do have, and you can explain it, Mr. Figueroa, better than, than I can, we do have that ability.
We do, Judge, uh, as long as it's, uh, for a, a public purpose, Judge, uh, and, you know, I guess one of, I know one of the incentives that we've been using with these individuals is that these improvements to the airport actually increases their property value.
Exactly, yes.
But, uh, even then, some of these, because of sentimental value or whatever the case may be, are not choosing to participate, so regrettably, it might get to the point where we have to go the condemnation route, uh, eminent using the powers of eminent domain. Um, but, you know, uh, it's, it'll become.
Losing its own.
Right, let's hope it doesn't get to that, but, uh, based on how long it's taken, it might, so.
Yeah, I think our patience and, and because our timelines to make those improvements are, are, are kind of colliding, we, we need to move, move forward with, uh.
Because we wanted to lengthen, hopefully, if, if we can get to an understanding by then, lengthen the, the runway another thousand feet, and that would help a lot to, you know.
To get some more, well, we'd be able to bring in the commercial traffic, yeah.
Of course.
All right, so the total would be six seventy-three, six thirty? That one, six hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Yeah, it'll be our magic, Commissioner, yeah.
What's the term of the, uh, project, Judge, so we can determine how the ten percent can be broken down?
Well, this is, what, what we're committing to is being able to apply for the matches for the three or four different type, uh.
Projects.
Okay, it's six hundred thousand roughly?
It's six, six.
Six seventy-three, six thirty.
That is throughout the timeline.
Throughout the whole.
Yeah.
That's how I'm asking, because I know we have.
It might be four, five years for maybe.
Four, five years.
So that was my question, now what, what's the time of the vote?
Yes, because it, it, I don't know if you all got a copy of it, but it'll tell you there more or less, like, the first one's gonna be, uh, the a hundred thousand for, I mean, sorry, three hundred thousand for the engineering, so it's gonna go from, uh, from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the construction for, uh, everything else is gonna be twenty-four to twenty-five. That would be the five point eight million.
The five hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe after three years, so that, I mean, that's.
It's much better, three year, four year.
Yes, it's a.
We want to get back to that airport.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, good work. Uh, thank you, I'm on for pulling the hard hours and a lot of phone calls and emails that, uh, and we, we remember the gentleman who's, who's proposing.
Who's our new planner?
Yeah, our new planner, and, and yes, he says, uh, there's definitely a need for, for our committee to, to make these improvements, so.
Of course.
And how much are we looking to generate per year?
Then, though, on the fuel farm, once we get the fuel farm going, I'll, we can check on the numbers, because when I got there, I mean, there was basically no fuel. I started working and bringing in fuel and, you know, we were bringing in funds like that, but, you know, once everything gets going, I'll be able to, to give you all the.
Crunch numbers.
On the revenues. So, because this coming year, we have no revenues because of our fuel farm situation.
And we're still, were we able to clear that hurdle on, on the electric, for the contractor has been, uh, trying to, to get some type of information from our departments.
I don't think so, Judge, but I'll, I'll.
Our, our county treasurer is in charge of all the electrical accounts.
Yeah.
Of AP, many electric.
And what is, uh?
They're needing, they're needing some information from him, and we haven't been able to, to, to acquire it from, from the treasurer's office. I don't know if we can allow, uh, maybe have another authorized signature or.
Is there only one authorized? I got the, the auditor with one, too, you're not.
She's the.
It's only him.
No, I think, Mr. O'Gard, you can look into that, maybe you can, because, uh, uh, we, we reached a, a roadblock.
Okay.
And, uh, the contract, the vendor, the contractor was awarded the, the contract for that fuel farm has been, uh, basically stalled by us not providing the necessary information.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll connect with, uh, Mr. Salinas, too.
Okay.
Remedy that.
Sure. Okay, with you.
Okay, that's, yeah, get on that. Okay. All right, so we got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Gasso approves, uh, the county's, uh, match of, of, of.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, which is six hundred and.
Six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and thirty within the four-year span of.
Yes.
Okay.
Four years.
Second by Commissioner Solis. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Montes.
Item number eighteen is to approve payment of invoice in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred to Rodriguez Professional Services for professional administration services and operation loan star final closeout for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner, uh, Morales. For the record, Commissioners, on, on reimbursements, uh, uh, we have received a total of seven hundred and forty thousand four thirty-four twenty-two of, uh, of the reimbursements that we have requested. Mainly from, I guess, the prosecution side of it. I think everything we requested and then, uh, being able to purchase, which includes a lot of, uh, equipment and, uh, and staff, all salaries have been reimbursed, including, uh, the thirty-two thousand for Mr. uh, Rodriguez. Uh, I don't know, the sheriff's department, uh, Joe, I, I don't, can you, got some questions for the sheriff? Are, are we submitting reimbursements?
We, we are submitting reimbursements on the other loan star, on the other LS we have for the units. On this one, we're expecting to send out some of the invoices, so that, I mean, some of the, the checks to get paid. The agreement was that we would request reimbursement once we sent out the, the checks. The equipment has been delayed. It, most of it is already here, so we're at that point to where we're gonna send out all the reimbursements.
So, so you have sent, uh, for approval to the governor's office already?
Yes.
For those, for those purchases?
On the purchases, those, those purchases that we have made, some of them, we have to re-reconsider because some of that equipment was not available.
Okay.
So we had to reconsider and we had to resend again.
And I, I just wanna make sure, like, the purchases we're making, we extend and approve to the governor's office and say, okay, Mr. Governor's Office, this is what we want to purchase, and they, they sign off, yes. Then they say, then we make those purchases and get the reimbursement. Have you been approved by the governor's office to make those purchases?
Okay, so we've never done that because that's not the way we've done it.
Is that, we, we don't wanna be funded, we, the county doesn't have the capacity to fund large purchases and then, then it, then say, well, hopefully we'll get paid. That's what I'm getting at. We wanna be a hundred percent sure that we're gonna get reimbursed.
Yes, so we're following the items that are permissible to purchase. Those are the items for first. Whatever's on the list that's permissible, that's for purchase.
So they, they do qualify, they do.
They do, for some guidelines. But if, if the court wants us to send for approval, we can do that.
I think.
It's just more paperwork, we can do that.
Yeah, so it'd be more, here is it, with, with Stone Garden, we did not receive reimbursement for a whole year, that, that, on, on the salaries.
We, we just.
I just submitted, uh, Friday, Thursday, Friday, I submitted for.
The whole year. So that's.
Final one.
So, so the county, we were, we were making all these payments, which is fine, uh, but we're having to absorb those costs, which we have limited funds.
Okay, so when you're talking about the whole year, it doesn't mean that the employees worked an entire year. It means that for us, they worked a quarter of that year.
I, I know, Mr. Pagan, but we didn't submit for reimbursement until the grant had expired. I, I think you could probably say, why don't you submit it quarterly or biannual?
Okay, so, I, you know where this all goes to? Because we don't have anybody to, we didn't have anybody to do the reimbursements for us.
Okay.
That's the reason why.
Which, which now I'm doing, so.
So.
So I'll be the.
Yeah, I wanna make sure because, of course, we wanna support, the, the court supports all these initiatives and grants, but we can't fund them on, on our own, on our county taxpayers. We can't afford it.
We need fast turnaround.
Make sure that whatever we spend, that we are being reimbursed for and, and not be stuck with the bill, holding the bill. I just, that, that certainly should concern all of us.
And we've never had that problem, Judge, until now.
There you go, we'll.
But that, because.
So, but, but it didn't, it didn't, we didn't, it didn't catch our attention until the grant was over. I mean, you should've come and sit at court three months in and say, you know what, Judge, we haven't submitted for reimbursement because we're having this issue. We, we had to find out that the grant expired, that all this money had been paid out by the county, and now how we're gonna get it back. I, I don't wanna be in that position. So now, we understand, we're trying to clean up, but, but I just wanna make sure on these purchases, you have gotten a pool for reimbursement?
Not from the governor's office.
Well, I like the pool from the governor's office.
We can, we can do that, but to clear things off, we, there, there was an extension to the, to the Operation Stone Garden. There was an extension on the deadline, and we received an extension to the end of this month from May. The reason why we're in this bind is because the, the county treasurer, because of the whole thing that was going on with LS, the county treasurer did not want it reimbursed for any because of the whole portal that was going on.
Yeah.
That's the reason why we're here.
Yeah, it was, it's been a, a difficult swing, but at the same time, we're spending money.
So you're gonna be sending them for reimbursement every, every quarter or?
Y'all, y'all.
I understand the county treasurer being in that position. I understand him being in that position because he was being.
But, but, but still, uh, Mr. Pagan, your court continues spending money, even though.
We didn't, we, we weren't spending any more Operation, uh, Stone Garden. We, we weren't. That grant ended in December.
Yeah, I just, well, my mistake was May, but I guess December.
May is the deadline to submit?
Yes.
That's, that's the.
I would say.
By the year, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we have a motion to, I just wanna make sure that the county, we don't, we can't fund all these grants, which are multimillion dollar grants, and then expend them, wait to see if we're gonna get reimbursed or not. Because the side of this grant, we, they're saying, okay, we have, we've been budgeted, too. We, we have, uh, uh, you know, couple million dollars that have been budgeted, but we say, okay, governor's office, is this okay for us to do? Yes, get approval, then we do it. I just think we need to, all, all the department needs to follow that, uh, that same procedure.
We don't wanna be left holding a bag.
That, we can't afford it. We can't afford three million dollars to, to spend and not, not be reimbursed on. So let's put a bind on the county. So we, I need a motion to approve the thirty-two thousand.
Mendoz, Morales, already.
Yeah, Mendoz, Morales.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen is to reinstate the burn ban for all Zapata County. Danny, uh, can you approach? I, I put this item, I just wanted to make sure we have it. I thought we had it, but I've looked at some of the Texas Forest maps and Zapata County is not colored yellow on that as, for us being, uh.
I checked it before this fire happened, uh, not because of anticipation or anything, and we were, uh, we've been in.
I, I, I thought we were, but.
For, for years, and it was never removed, but I had, I, I was not aware that they had taken it off.
Does it automatically expire?
No, it doesn't.
It automatically, mine appears upon the title.
To, to the Texas Forest Service, when, when, first it hasn't got approved through Commissioner's Court approval, and then we submitted to them and they put us up on the map that Zapata County is in a burn ban, and they do not remove it until we.
Contact.
I, I thought that, what Danny was saying, I thought that, that's where we were, that's where we were standing, but.
So with this, Judge, I'll check again in this, e- even if they did remove us with this approvals, uh, with the Commissioner's Court approval for the burn ban, why can't just submit the, the minutes for the Commissioner's Court so they can reinstate?
And that's why Danny had brought it earlier for, because we, we thought we were part of it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
If it wasn't that we didn't bring it up because we didn't think it was necessary, of course it's necessary, and I think the judge.
It covers the whole county?
It's the whole county.
Can I second the motion to reinstate the burn ban?
Motion by Commissioner Gasso, second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to approve invoice to REBMP Incorporated in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for repairs to the Falcon Nutrition Center in Phoenix One.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is to approve payment of an invoice to Martinez Electrical Services for LLC for work done at Zapata County Show Barn.
Motion to approve.
Second, it'll be a total of a thousand six hundred and seven with eighty-five cents.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis.
Um, what happened here is that we have two invoices, and there's only one here, but I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
I know that for previous years. If you look at the total that we have there, it doesn't add up because the numbers in the black areas, they come out. The total is sixteen oh seven point eight five, because it's.
Sixty oh.
Something I was done at the show barn back then.
Twenty-two.
Two.
And those are both invoices combined?
No, this is just one.
Just the other one you're gonna bring?
I'll, I'll bring the other one on a later.
You'll give me those invoices?
Yeah, I'll give them.
Sixteen oh seven point eight five. Motion is second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty-two is to hire Brianna Wallace at the county clerk's office under operational store at ten hours an hour effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second motion by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Number twenty-three is to approve submission of the Texas Aviation Grant. Is that the same one?
That's what we discussed, Judge.
Okay, no action on twenty-three? Item number twenty-four is to approve the payment of an invoice to Thomas Chapa for a concrete slab at Zapata County Airport utilizing, utilizing grant funds.
That's gonna be for the covered parking area, Judge, because there's a lot.
They still have some monies left in rent.
Yes, yes.
Total of seven thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number twenty-five is to allow additional funds to process payment for pending invoices for the indigest program. Question by, please, I'm sorry, did you get the right there this morning?
Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
Just a little bit numbers so y'all can see. Good morning. I know you have your very generous with this problem, but I really need your help just to close it up for this year. And can somebody, can you give me the paper, please, and then we'll give it to you back. Are you gonna make from? I made some documentation so y'all can see what's been done there at the program. You can see on the left side, which you have a regular rate, and then on the right side, that's what we've been paying for.
Okay.
So you do see the numbers, like, actually, they're pretty high. In the medical center for the contract funds, it's been six thousand and eighty-six dollars, but actually, we've, and those, the ones on top, we do not pay, they go on the contract, it comes to a total of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So, so, were those paid?
The one I just gave you?
Oh, yeah.
See, on the right side, those are the ones that we're taking care of, in the bottom, you'll see the local funds, which is the monies the county, we've been using for the county, which are physicians outside of the contract and the medications for Daniels. The physician's been in total of sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four, but we actually only paid eighteen thousand dollars. And I did this for the reason, so you can see, I mean, because since I'm asking for more monies, then.
And that's fine, what I'm looking at, of course, the county's required to send aside eight percent of our general tax revenues for each and healthcare. The majority of it goes to, we have a agreement with L M C. What I'm saying is, what I'm thinking is, why can't we deduct the amount?
I've been trying to get to that point.
See, L M C should be paying, we don't pay yet L M C.
No, we don't pay the Zapata Medical Funds, we don't pay the radiology labs, we don't pay the physicians that are under the, I need what, all of that, because it was gonna be too much info. That eight percent, what I've been trying is, I've been talking to L M C, seeing how we can actually submit a little bit more of our local funds.
Well, I just, I just think we need to budget, to see how much we spent this year.
Yes.
And in our hearing, budget hearing that's coming up, unfortunately.
Yes, definitely.
I think we need to reduce the amount that we sent to L M C and budget it out.
I've talked to, uh, the C O O, and he, I was asking why we're paying, if they have doctors on staff. And the thing is, if we have doctors, if you're a doctor with L M C on staff, and I'm a doctor that happens to work at L M C, but I'm not on staff, we want our people to go to the one on staff because we don't pay. If we go to the one that's not on staff, then we pay, so we have, you know, we've, I've emailed you a list with the people, the doctors that are on staff.
Our own main, Mr. Morales. So basically, I started blindfolded and was guided to this program with nothing to know.
You did really good work.
So, so then, when he sent me that email, boom, of course, it's like, oh, that would've been easy in January, right? Because we could've eliminated those ten thousand dollars there. And you can see on the medications and Daniels, that was another issue that I had in the beginning because we were buying brand medication instead of generic. But then, you have all these patients that are diabetic, which you do not find generic.
Generic.
Generic, generic brand, and you have to, you actually have to buy the brand. But that, I eliminated the whole thing using Magda Flores.
That program actually very good.
So that program has grown a lot, so we kind of got rid of that, and that's why we're going now towards only the generic. So we're not gonna spend those ten thousand dollars anymore if we still have that Texas A and M healthcare program.
So for this round of invoices, Patty, you're requesting ten thousand dollars?
Yes, and it's not, I do not need all the ten thousand dollars, but if you can give it to me, that'd be great, because we still have it lost in September, and I have a lot of patients.
What I'm thinking is, why can't, and that might be one change that we can do during our budget amendments hearings, is just reduce the amount that we've spent, expended this year out of additional county indigent funds. Reduce it from the amount we contribute to that eleven fifteen where we have L M C, especially they're not helping us out with some of these.
Uh, no, and actually, I went to free because I didn't wanna pay training, and I went to free training that Red County was presenting, and I found out that, yes, most of the counties do that, they take the money in out of the same.
Yeah, the fucking eight percent, yes.
Yeah.
Well, what the court decided a few years ago, because of our limited lack of, limited healthcare, is we had an agreement with L M C, which is the largest in our area hospital, a medical provider, and what, the state came out with a program, the eleven fifteen waiver, where they would match funds for any monies that the county contributed, they would match the funds, and that would allow for L M C to operate initially a twenty-four hour clinic. We had a much larger tax base back then, and what we were able to contribute, that eight percent, of course, they would take their arrangement program, but then they would also offer services to the entire community by having a twenty-four hour clinic, so it made sense to us. As our tax base decreased, we're not able to contribute enough to have a twenty-four hour clinic, so basically have a twelve hour clinic. But it seems that we're still paying for our indigent, which they should, really foot the whole bill, because they're getting paid a considerable amount of money, and and that may be a decision the court would move forward, whether we wanna continue with that program, or do you want us to tell L M C, you know what, we more than welcome you here to operate a clinic, but we're gonna save our indigent monies and spend them.
Yeah, because you can actually have an open contract, which is, which makes a lot better.
We just wanted to offer more to the community, take their arrangement, as the state requires us to do, and then offer additional services to the community.
Yeah, but I'm hoping that next year, and if I'm still here, we can run this different, because, yes, I've gotten with Gateway, and there's a lot of things I didn't know at the beginning, that is like, okay, why are you sending me the people over here when you can give them the service over there, right? And there's little things like that, and I.
Of course, but, but the problem there is, Gateway does only outpatient services.
Yes.
Inpatient requires the hospital, so we would have to have separate agreements between the hospital and, and of course, the clinic. And yes, the county could save some money, but we might not have a twelve hour clinic, and then we might struggle to get inpatient services, so it's not.
You'll probably end up paying more that way, going to pay more that way.
So it's, I think, for the, for the few years we have, we've done the best we can with, with, you know, trying to improve the medical services in our.
I think it's good, and next year, while we won't be spending those.
But certainly, we can reduce the amount that we are, that we send to commit to L M C, to make sure that we have no additional expenses.
And we are sharing a lot more people with me once I was there.
Yes, yes.
And that's probably something we can go over, maybe in another meeting with the eligibility scale.
About ten thousand, it's coming out of our general fund, to, motion to approve, that's a total of ten thousand dollars. Motion by Commissioner Solis, signed by Commissioner Mendoza, any other discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. To approve a pay increase for Juan Peña from sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents an hour to seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents an hour, slot number fourteen. Mr. Peña has his water operator license D and has taken on more responsibilities at the San Ignacio Water Plant.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, second by Commissioner Solis, and as you can explain the reasoning around for.
Yes, he's the B operator that was working here in Zapata, and because we had some personnel changes in the San Ignacio Plant, he took on more responsibilities there, so he should be the lead operator there, so he's, he's got the B license, which is, we have three B operators here.
Motion is second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven is to approve a pay increase for Mr. Palamar Cantú from seventeen dollars ninety-three cents per hour to eighteen dollars and forty-two cents per hour, slot number eleven. Mr. Cantú has his water operator, radar license D, and has been acting supervisor at both Zapata and San Ignacio Water Plant.
Motion to approve second.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, so Mr. Cantú will be supervising of both of them?
Yes, sir, yes.
For cover plants and, I guess, is there a shortage of operators? There's always a need for operators, maybe the public.
We have two operators right now that are in training, so hopefully they're gonna be getting their D license. They're set to go to a course in about three or four weeks.
That's the exit level license, right?
Again, it goes in reverse order, right?
They just need to, yeah, it goes in reverse order, they just need to have the experience, so, you know, we have two that are gonna be taking these courses, and they should be, they should be licensed operators, so I'm gonna stay with them about, about three months.
That's great, that's good.
Motion is second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight is to approve an increase of seven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents for the previously approved purchase of two petroleum units from reliable Chevrolet, previously approved on Commissioners' Court held on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, for the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and two seventy-eight, current invoiced amount is one hundred and forty-two thousand five twenty.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis, so, so you're gonna write a check today?
If it gets approved, yes.
And then, are we good for reimbursement?
When were you being?
We already submitted for.
That's when we submitted?
That's when we submitted.
Okay, all right. Got a motion in the second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-nine is to approve payment to Top Stop for the amount of forty-seven thousand five eighty-one from Operation Lone Star Grant for uniforms.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza. What is this?
These are uniforms, they are permissible under the grant, we have submitted, they were on the budget when we first submitted the grant.
Okay.
And none of those items came back, except for one, we cannot use. One that we did get back was few for the helicopter.
Okay, and we'll do the same, and also for the second, Commissioner Morales, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty, to approve an increase of three thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars for the previously approved purchase of laptop for petroleum units with ticket riders from Peacemaker Technologies, previously approved on Commissioners' Court held on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three for the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, current invoiced amount is two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Motion by Commissioner Solis, which one is this from?
Lone Star, L S, the border counties, and there is some line item for.
So this would be border counties?
Border counties.
You have a line item for that?
Yes, it is approved.
Will you be submitting, will you be submitting that invoice on tomorrow night?
Right away.
And today?
Or, yeah, today.
Today, okay. I just wanna make sure we don't wait a year.
No, so, something I need to clarify, when you asked that we got approved, we do have to send in justification letters for Operation Stone Garden and others.
I understand, yes. But there's just been a lack of effort, Joe, to send these reimbursements in, there hasn't been done.
I visited your office, and I've been trying to get reimbursement for this.
Okay.
For a while.
All right. Got a motion in the second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirty-one is to approve invoices for Cardinal and Creighton project. The project is complete and exempted by the county. Can we start it, Premier, Janir?
Morning, from Thomas.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Always good to see you for invoices.
It's not a good day to invoice today. We have been working with Mr. Collesser on the, on this project for the reimbursements, and he's, he's done it for the county on that part. I'm not sure if we've gotten reimbursed for everything that we've paid out.
I just figured from the.
So, we will, what we're requesting today is, we're able to set the project as complete, we've already done the inspection on the condition of the project, and then to approve the invoice pending, we need a letter from the contractor for a one-year warranty, and then we also need a letter from the contractor for all that and, and all that can be paid, where they've already paid all their vendors, and then they give us an, give an affidavit.
Okay.
That's.
And although, raising our reports on that is the danger?
No, so, we would, it would be pinned, like, we would never use payment until all that gets submitted to Mr. Esser. Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Esser this morning, he said, if we can approve it, contingent to them providing me all the information, I need to have the project.
You need to make sure that, yeah, we don't pay it out, and then we'll have trouble giving all that.
Correct, so it would be contingent on Mr. Esser receiving his closeout documents.
Okay.
He has sixty days to close out the project, and so, I guess, from this point, we would have sixty days to, well, he has sixty days from the contract time, which I think is a little bit further down the line, but I think he can get it done within the sixty days that we have.
What invoices are you requesting today?
Right now, we're requesting invoice for move line, it's invoice number five, for forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Do you have invoices?
I have a, I have a copy of one of the invoices, it's not the five, it's the invoice five, we still have a retainage, so we'll be coming back with a retainage.
So it's forty-nine eight seventy?
Forty-nine eight seventy.
Okay.
And then, we have a retainage pending for sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents. That would be pending for when.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve invoice for move line for forty-nine thousand, what do you think that's called?
Eight seventy? Eight seventy.
Eight hundred and seventy dollars, and that's invoice number five, taken by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor, say aye.
It's a, it's a total of sixteen thousand.
Yeah, it's a total of sixty-six thousand eight twenty.
Well, that one's gonna come back for.
Over in back, please.
Over in back, okay.
Over in back, please.
Okay. So the forty-nine eight seventy.
And then, when we close it out for sure.
Who did this?
Right.
Mendoza? Solis Mendoza.
Got a motion in the second, although in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. That was the only invoice here for that project?
That's it, I'll submit mine with the retainage.
Okay, all right.
We can come, we can back it up.
Okay. Item number thirty-two is to advertise for contractors for the Megatolus, well, around thirty-one. I did get a call on the Texas, I guess it's the same area for Pelican.
Pelican.
We have, we're gonna have the same issues with the water lines, are we moving on that?
We did, we did get with Mr. Dino and with Ferguson Materials that provides, which was, we did send them a, an estimate for four-inch pipe that we need.
Okay.
To reroute that line, and we've asked move lines providers that cost for that, and we've asked another contractor to provide the cost.
We're not able to do that, it's too much for our crews to install that four-inch line, all right?
We can, the other thing that, we've had so many leaks, especially with the weather, so I don't know, if they'd be, if they'd start and then they would have to be pulled back so they could repair the leaks, I don't know if the contractor is gonna be able to, to just, even be patient enough, hopefully.
Well, if they would help us with the budget, I mean, we're already over budget on that project.
We can, and we're still waiting for the, for the, for the materials, which is the pipe and the valves and the connections.
That's fine.
But we can, I mean.
I think, let's see, we can put a crew together and try it out, even if the Commissioner can help you with some manpower, Commissioner, it's your project.
Yeah, the crews are definitely there to help out, so whatever.
I think we need to combine the groups for these projects from all available sources to help out, we just can't keep paying, we don't have.
It's about, it's two blocks, so it's about six hundred and eighty feet, and we're looking at about, we're wanting to run the services for the water. There's only one property that has like, a dwelling on it, but then all the other properties are vacant lots, so we're proposing to run like a dual service connection, so it's run a one-inch line, and it would service the two properties, so that we can minimize these six services that we'll be looking at, and then the furniture as well, but it, I understand it is, it is a project that, we've got limited funds from Texas, so we're trying to do as much as we can, we already reduced the project.
And we're still spending assets county funds?
Yes, right, so that's, I think having the county.
Yeah, we can, at least help with the manpower and. Item number thirty-two is to advertise for contractors for the Megatolus Park improvement project.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Morales, and so, I'm glad to see that.
We did get approval from the agency, from Park Morales, to go over these, I brought a couple of the plans, I, we did already try to tighten on everything, but I gotta tell you.
That's fine, we've been waiting long, I think the folks, I.
The Commissioner gets question on that project.
Is this the one?
Is this the one for Carlos Polina Vargas or?
That's the one we.
Have you spoken to him?
I did tell him that we were advertising for it. Uh, he just requested a copy of the, the advertisement.
He's been calling, that's what I'm asking.
So, yeah, so I, I, I'll send them when we put it out, what we put.
So when are we gonna be able to go to the next phase? Once we get approval for this, I think that there's phase one, phase two for that project.
For this project, this, this, this phase right here, we can go back as a county and request additional funds for the next part, which is, right now we went up to where we have like a small creek.
Right.
And then we had maybe planned on, on the other side of the creek doing some additional improvements.
Right.
So I think this, we didn't put a very long time of construction.
On that, uh, on that creek, are we gonna put like, uh, like a culvert or something and then like fill it in or?
If, if we ever go to.
It's too, right? It would be on, on, it would be on the phase two and it would be on how much budget we get. Together, and this one we got a hundred and fifty thousand.
Cause I know that's where it starts.
If I put a culvert to cover it, it won't cover the.
It's gonna go pretty quickly, yeah.
Yeah, it will be the, I already know, it won't.
Yeah, but that'd be something like.
Yeah, because that's where the water starts entering and then goes to Medina.
So, yeah. Yeah, if we, if we're able to cover it, I mean, it's, it's ideal, it's just.
You can utilize.
Otherwise, it's, it's not, it's not ideal. So we maybe can, uh, look at how we can improve it, maybe with a concrete line it or something. So that, you know, eight months out of the year or maybe ten months out of the year, that we don't have rain, they, it's, it's cleaned out. So that, that one, uh, appreciate.
Got a motion, is that your motion?
Mendoza, Morales.
Mendoza, Morales.
Okay, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, uh, you'll take care of that or you?
On, uh, for, we're, we're.
You already signed your contract, oh, you already did.
We're already, we're doing it, so, um, I guess, uh.
It runs two weeks.
It runs for two weeks, so try it on Thursday and it'll come out again this Thursday and we'll open it the following Friday.
Very well.
Is that something you're supposed to be handling or do you miss?
He can handle it. We've always done, yeah, we've always, yeah, we, we've always done.
That's fine. Sometimes a lot of my staff will, will take care of that, but certainly the engineer, once he's hired, he can do that.
We've always done it and the bill comes to the county from, from the newspaper, so that's it.
So it's just, uh, and that it serves it, appreciate that. That's one nice thing for us to do.
That, thank you. That's good, no problem.
Item number thirty-three is to award contractor for the Zapata County Regional Jail project. Yeah, make sure you do it.
I'm gonna pass out. On this one, Judge, we bid it out so that we could, you know. We weren't sure what the numbers were gonna come in like.
You got an extra?
I had eight.
Yeah, there is, there's an extra.
I knew I had eight. Jolly commissioners, we have the beers. We sent out these, uh, to about fourteen companies and, um, the majority of them, not all of them, showed up to a, a creek destruction, uh, walkthrough. So we did a walkthrough, uh, so that they could clearly understand the scope of work. We gave them a spreadsheet on what was gonna be required for them to. And there is, uh, the jail is, is over twenty years old. It has some cracks in, in some of the walls and in some of the cells. We need to repair those cracks and we need to repaint it. Some of the doors, what has happened is the, they, the image have removed the seals from the window that attaches to the door, so it rattles and it hasn't broken at this point, but I think, uh.
There's, there's a big discrepancy from the top to the bottom, so I'd be kind of hesitant to award it to the lowest bidder. Are you sure that they got the full, full concept of the scope of work or?
I did, I did call the no bidder. I asked him for some references, if he could provide me some references of similar type work that he's done in the past. He provided me two references, um, one for a nine-one-one center that he had done and I spoke to.
Did we give him a list of the stuff that had to be do, that like done to the jail? Cause there's a significant difference in.
No, he, he, yeah, he has.
But Franks, is that local? Are they local, Franks?
The Franks.
Big difference.
Franks?
They're not local.
Yes, they are.
Other local.
It's Luban, Campus and Franks, I think are local. But there's a significant difference, that's why.
Yeah, so we have, um, I did ask for some.
Your estimates were there around that much?
Our, we called, we called for a review, so we did specify a particular paint that we wanted. It's an epoxy paint. Uh, it's a two-part mix. You have to mix it and then you have to use it or you lose it. And it is, it is very expensive. We estimated about ten thousand dollars in materials, so neighbors gonna be maybe like four thousand dollars, so. Yeah, so I, I did, uh, talk to the gentleman, uh, the no bidder, Mister, uh, Franks. And I asked him if he would be able to complete the job and, you know, if he would be able to get everything done. He said yes, I asked him for some references, he gave me two, one for the sheriff's office in Jim Hogg, one for the nine-one-one center in Laredo. And he also bid the nine-one-one or the nine-one-one dispatch center here in Zapata and I got a reference from him, uh, from there as well.
And that, that's including that epoxy paint that you're talking about?
Yeah, yes, I did, I did clarify that and it is in respect that he submitted on his bid, he submitted initially, I got, I brought off the bid with me. But initially he submitted the, the bid sheet that we provided him and he sub, he submitted a, uh, cover sheet that specified the work that's to be done and the price and he attached to that his, uh, bid sheet. But his bid sheet, he had a blank. I said, I won't be able to present that blank. I said, I need it filled out with your total bid. Are you able to do what we're requesting here for this same price? He says, yes, absolutely. And he walked it with the guys.
And then the, the references checked out, Mr. O'Connell?
The references that he gave me, I, they talked to, to two different ladies and, um, both of the ladies, uh, one of them's from Jim Hogg, the other one's from the nine-one-one center, gave him a good, you know, a good, um, recommendation that he had finished the work and he had done the work. I didn't personally know the person, but if I know or not know, I have to present. Doesn't matter, I have to present to the court based on, checking for references and I did tell him I need an insurance.
Yeah.
To do the job. He did provide me a copy of, if, if awarded, he provided me a copy with his insurance, uh, contractor's insurance. We are gonna be working in county property and.
Well, you did the diligence, you followed up, so.
Are we gonna get, uh, like, uh, what's it called? Like, uh, uh, a year, two years of, if anything happens to the.
They give him one-year warranty on the work, yeah. I mean.
Make a motion to award the contractor of Franks, uh, construction for a total of twenty-two thousand three hundred and eight. Seconded by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza.
Find out.
Although in favor, say aye.
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 Our, uh, sure, uh, Commissioner, the, um, most of the damages, like the president said that, it's fine. But some of the other damages, they, they may cost, yes, they, they remove the paint or they remove the sealer. Uh, we did spec out tougher sealer and harder paint, like it's much bigger than the regular paint that you would use. So it would be a lot harder, but.
Okay, it's gonna be done then.
Yes, okay, too.
Alright, we want to, item number thirty-four is to reduce the number of replats of four oh eight Lincoln lot of one oh two and this is in Lincoln, San Ignacio or?
Yeah, I think I have it in San Ignacio.
I brought a small sketch, Judge, for, for. Small sketch. I did bring a big map also.
That's okay.
It's, it's, it's in San Ignacio.
Okay.
This is, uh, Miss Star's property.
Does it meet the requirements of the law?
I did, what I looked at, Commissioner, is that the size of the lot is much larger than our stamp. This is an old subdivision there in San Ignacio. So the size of lots there are much larger than the ones we have here in the town side of Zapata. The ones we have, uh, they're about nine thousand six hundred square feet, uh, seventy by one forty. That one is like twenty-one thousand square feet. So when you divide it in two, in roughly, you're gonna have about the same size of a lot that you would have here in the town side. That was my concern at all, that if, if a lot could get too small, that the court may not be, uh, favorable to splitting it in half. But once they started, uh, doing the measurements and we determined the size of it, they're gonna have the same or bigger than we do have here in the town side. Which I think it, it's not, um, it wouldn't affect the, uh, the town there in San Ignacio. Homes are already existing, so it's just splitting the, it's an old.
Is there gonna be like an alley in between?
So, so Mr. Naro. It's here, but for, for Lando Rivas is the owner.
For Lando Rivas is the owner, he's selling to, uh, uh, Ms. Diana Dosano, uh, sorry.
Okay.
She, she's buying the stone home that's on the, on the left-hand side and, uh, Mister Rivas keeping the one on the right-hand side on the back.
Okay, so if there are any restrictions from the Texas Historical Commission on replanting this specific area, you can read it. Requesting good for.
No, I'm just saying, I know San Ignacio is a very delicate area with, uh, with planting and replating and I hate to make it more complex for you, but, uh.
I, I don't know if there's any restrictions from the historical commission. I think the intention is to, um, improve or.
Restore?
Restore, restore the stone home that's on the, that's on the corner, the one that's being, so, the, they'd like to restore it back. You know, the way, the way it's intended to be, the, I'm sure they'll have to follow restoration, you know, guidelines for, for that process. But the old, uh, new home that's on the back, that one, the newer house, that one is for Rivas, or he, currently there, so he's keeping that for himself. The older house, I think was his parents' home and he's wanting to, you know, I think they're family members, but they're wanting to sell it and, uh, they wanna improve it or push through.
So there's no action on this, right? It's just a review?
No, no, it, it's a preliminary, so it's just a review. I'll break it back into each from final and at, at final it'll be, uh, it'll, I guess, if I can get an approval on the preliminary.
I think that would be good. That way I can. They might, they might have some constraints with closing, so they might wanna get some.
Motion to approve the preliminary reset.
That's it, Commissioner.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve the preliminary repla, replat, seconded by Commissioner Morales, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll bring it back for a final, okay.
Yeah, cause it'll be pending the, the historical.
Yes.
More homework.
Item number thirty-five is to approve an interlocal agreement for E nine-one-one public answering point services. There are four fees.
Is this something we do every year or?
They did send, yes, uh.
Just for my.
Yes, they already heard who.
Judge, I have reviewed the, uh, interlocal, it was submitted by your office last week, uh, went through the document. Uh, now there is a, uh, a, a section there that requires the transfer of our interest in certain equipment to the city as, as part of the agreement for participation in this, uh, in this, uh, interlocal agreement, Judge. So I'm not certain who has the information for what, uh, uh, equipment needs to actually be transferred because the second page of the addendums is left blank. So that's probably something that is.
Maybe it belongs to the city or regional department already.
Well, it might be theirs already, I don't know, but it's left blank, Judge, and there's a, a requirement for it to be transferred and identified. And, uh, I don't know who would have that information.
You want us to get additional information on it?
Well, we can approve it subject to, uh, a confirmation from the sheriff's department as to what exactly is, uh, going to get transferred.
That's fine.
It's public motion that we approve it pending approval from the sheriff's department and legal counsel.
Second, motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we've got two line item transfers.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis to, uh, to approve the two consent items, which is, uh, the two to the fees. Two hundred and eighteen hundred to supplies. And pound cart eighteen hundred, annual supplies, the travel and training eighteen hundred and sixty-six point seventy-five. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales, we are now adjourned.